If you please stand and swivel the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our meeting. Next thing on the agenda are the approval of the minutes for our last meeting, January twenty second. Any problems with the minute?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second, so the motion by Chris second night can to approve the events of our last meeting, January twenty second. All those in favor? Thank you. You're abstaining or?
Yeah, I was not here.
Okay. So there's one extension. And the next are department head reports and.
Yeah, Justin, I think there's someone in the waiting room.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening. Fire Department's been relatively quiet the last couple of weeks. We just went out on a call this evening for gas order up on Backstreet. Fortunately, it was nothing serious. I don't have my notes with me because of that. I just came straight from the firehouse. As far as the fire department goes, we're doing really well. In fact, we had a couple, a couple of new members join. We had another couple prospective members, potentially a couple more juniors. So we're growing, which is awesome. You don't see that a lot in volunteer departments. I'm pleased with that. February, we've got ice skating party coming up, February twentieth. We have been back and forth with location. We started at the beach and then we kind of nixed that because there was a lot of collected water and slush several days ago. So we decided to come up here to this property and we're going to do it on the front lawn. And then we decided to snowball the front lawn and found out there's a lot, quick about a dip there more than what we thought. So we ended up right out back here on the, on the pavement for the playground and the basketball court. So really it is about a fifty foot by seventy five foot area that I measured out there. So it's good size, not quite as big as we had out on the lake, but it's doable. So right now tentatively, that's our plan. But we're going to go back and revisit the lake, I think, in a couple of days with all the melting going on. And maybe we'll get lucky and we'll be able to plow and go back to plan A. So just standby to standby and we'll put it out there on social media. Once we put the final plans, the good news is it's colder weather coming next Sunday night into Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week. So regardless where we end up, it'll, it'll be, there'll be an ice rink. And if Mother Nature doesn't cooperate and we don't have a rink, I think we'll still have an event. So we're still going to have a bonfire. We'll still have a food truck coming, trucking good foods scheduled to be here, serve, serve some hot food and just have maybe a snowball fight or something.
Make sure you video that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See what else? I think I scheduled my trip for, for Florida for the cancer supposance. So thank you again for that. That's all ready to go. Four, four days down in Sunshine State. So I appreciate that. Hopefully I'll bring back some good information for our department.
Bring back the weather.
That's right. After the ice skate party. So I'll be fine with that. Any questions for the fire department? That's all I have to report.
If you have a helicopter might be coming in.
Yes, it is. Okay, so next Thursday, next Thursday is our training night for light flight. And we're combining with the Cockney Logan Trail Blazers to do a training on procedures for, for setting up landing zones with light flight and working together with the snowmobile club. We extended invitation to the PD. If they have any officers that want to attend, they're welcome. So that'll be Thursday night. I didn't see, I didn't have the logistics.
They're gonna try.
And they're gonna do that where?
Back by the clubhouse or back here.
Okay, excellent. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works. Super pressing. At least we've been dealing with snow and lots of it, long hours. Town manager where we have one truck down. It's one of the one and a half ton dump trucks. It's needing a transmission part that's on back order through Ford. We hope to have it by the end of February. We exhausted all avenues looking for a used part and there are none out there. So the truck is not commissioned till further notice, which puts us down a man on the road. But we are working through it. If you see Rodney Boobier around, he's a former town public works foreman, employed for many years. Thank him for running the greater, almost nonstop with these two big storms and pushing snow back so we can keep as many men, keeping the roads open as possible. He's been a valuable asset to the public work department and very much thanks. I want to thank him publicly for just being willing to answer the phone and come in and work as many hours as it takes to keep, keep the roads open. So things are going well. The transfer station lines way down as expected to a point in the winter. We've seen an average of about seven hundred people a week on average using the transfer station for the three days it's open. So if you have any questions?
Do you have an idea of how that compares to this time last year in terms of volume at the transfer station, realizing that we made the publicly stated policy about permit checking, which as far as I know is going pretty smoothly in terms of people knowing that they're under the microscope aid.
What I'm being told is that the, it's the volume now seems to be about average.
Average.
This time of year.
Month of January, we had a hundred and ninety four calls for service. As you can see from the paperwork, I gave you a hundred and nine of those were dispatch calls were self-initiated calls. Are there any questions on that? I can answer that. We had four arrests in the month of January, one OUI, one is coded as other, which was a domestic situation. And then we had two operating after suspension arrest. Since our last meeting, we didn't buy that Ford Explorer that was down in Thompson. We had a price tag of twelve thousand four hundred on it and we were able to secure it for eleven thousand. And that's a vehicle that's parked out front right here right now. I just wanted it out there so you guys can see what, what you bought.
Chief, is there any costs for retrofitting it or making any changes to it?
Yeah, the, the, a lot of the equipment that we had out of the wreck cruiser will fit in there. There was some equipment that was damaged that we had to replace. And at the same time, we're upgrading the radio that's going in that one to a P twenty five compliant radio. That's already been purchased and right now, the big thing is waiting for parts for that. They can't get them until the twenty eighth of February. So that car won't go online till sometime mid March. Okay. I also want to say we, we are going to have some, I talked to public works director today about this. We're going to have, once we switch the radios over, we're going to have some extra radios that he can utilize. And I'm just throwing it out there that I think it'd be good just to transfer the ownership of the radio from us to them so they can utilize them. They're all programmed and it's no brain, no cost to him, just sliding them over. So last Wednesday, February second, I was audited by the state for a C just compliance audit. That didn't go through well. First time through with the audit, a lot of questions that they had that I, excuse me, that I could not answer. So I'm going through the process now. They give us thirty days to become, come in compliance with that audit. So now I'm, I'm just doing all the research and pulling out the paperwork that I need to prove that we're doing things right. Two of the initial issues that they, that we're at a compliance on is by taking the laptops out of the cruisers and bringing them into the PD to use, we're, we're not a secure, it's not a secure connection that's supposed to be left in the cars. So that, that, they're, they had a concern with that process that we're using the wifi. The other one was cleaning people in order for them to come into the clean the PD, they have to be vetted. And I have no way either have to keep someone in the PD with them all the time they're cleaning or they have to go through a vetting process and, and sign agreements that anything they see in there, they can't disclose. So that's an issue that I've got to deal with here right off in the near future. Pretty much that's, that's it in a nutshell. We've had knock on wood, no major accidents in the past couple of storms. Other than out on fish activity. Nothing to do with public work. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions?
Oh, just for your information, I think it pretty much goes for any vendor that you have enter the PD, they have to be a vetted vendor.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, computer, oil burner, electrician, anything like that.
Or, or they have to be, you have to have.
Have to be accompanied at all.
At all, at all times. And with the cleaners, when they come in after, after hours, it's a difficult thing to do because you're pulling one person, the only person we have on the road to stand in the PD while they spend an hour cleaning it, you know, and it just doesn't make sense because if they get called out, you know. So it's just, it's just something I have to deal with, figure out what they'll accept and where we go from here. That's all.
I assume that cleaning company is pretty large. They must have run into this before and have a way to.
Well, that's what we have to find out.
Now, there's a whole form, background check and number of things.
Fingerprint.
That they have to do.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only things that included in your packet, the letter from DOT saying they're starting to research the Main Street project. It looks like it's still twenty twenty three. And they'll be reaching out to us to set up a agreement if we want to do sidewalks and things like that. I, I didn't know if I, did I include this in your packet? I can't remember now that I have it in front of me or if I just got it. This is from the Mon, this is from the solar company. So as part of their agreement, they, they were just updating us on the donations that they were required to make for community benefits. The their agreement said, once the solar development is operational, the owner operator shall provide a letter to the town manager annually by July thirty first, confirming the contribution of five thousand to benefit the town and its residents. So what they did for twenty twenty two is they established a scholarship at Monmouth Academy and they mounted twenty five hundred. In addition, they made a donation to the Good Shepherd Food Bank in the amount of eight thousand dollars. And next month, they're going to make a five thousand dollar donation to full plates, full potential. So that's what they did this year.
What was the scholarship that I made?
Twenty five hundred.
Yep.
I think that's all that I. Donation to the. Oh, three or shepherd, the Good Shepherd Food Bank is eight thousand. And they're going to give five thousand to full plates, full potential.
What's that?
I'm not sure.
I think it might be a school related under program. Listen, I get a couple of questions for you. You mentioned the letter from DOT and they're working on this drainage project essentially on Main Street. And that's going to be very close, if not on top of the, the sidewalk project that we're looking at. How, how do you think those two are going to interact?
Well, what they're going to do is they'll reach, what, what do they call it? They call it a they call it M I D, I think, but I can't remember what it stands for. But they're basically going to come to us and they're going to try to do a partnership agreement so that their work will coincide with ours and we'll all sort of do the planning process all together. Kind of like what they did when they rebuilt downtown with Scasset or downtown of Concord, they get into a partnership with the town. So we're intimately involved with all of their project as well.
There was some question of them also doing the catch basins on Maple Street. So keep that one in mind. We don't want to have to, we don't want to be doing the sidewalks on Maple Street and then having them dig it up. And I know four years is going to start them in the spring or had planned on starting them in the spring.
I think they spoke to that at that meeting, the Maple Street meeting. So I was at the Maple Street meeting and I'm pretty sure that they, they spoke to all of that.
Okay.
And the catch basins, because that's why we held off on Maple Street because we knew the catch basins were.
I can reach out to this guy.
Yeah.
And make sure that he's aware.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure all of that and Joel was there because we talked about catch basins, right? Yes, in front of your house and yes. So we, we did. We, I know we talked about it. Yes.
Okay. So. I want to make sure we brought it to the town manager's attention since he'll be managing the projects.
And while we're on the topic of DOT, I know at our last meeting, there was some question as to the scope of what they're planning to do on the Wagon Bridge.
Oh, that's right. I, I did, I did reach out, but I didn't hear back. So let me follow up. Okay. I'll send you guys an email.
And what's the other bridge they're planning on replacing?
Is there another one?
There's two in Monmouth. And I can't for the life, can we remember the second name of the second one?
Oh, it's down by, on the South Monmouth Road. It's, I don't think it's replaced.
Oh, it's, they're just doing abutments.
Yeah.
Abutments on the bridge that crosses the Jock Stream and South Monmouth. Right at the intersect where, where the South Monmouth Road takes.
It's not what I remember, but, but just to ask that, I, I thought there was two bridge replacements and some other bridge work, but I, I can't remember now. It could be, it could be what he says. I don't know.
Okay. I'll send you an email once I hear back.
Awesome. I also noted that you did some work with, with Dan on changing up our salt procedure. The, this was in your newsletter that, that you were investigating a different salt method.
Just that we met with the DOT and he kind of gave us some high level information and said that we could reach back to them if we wanted to.
Okay, okay.
Learn more about it. There hasn't been any, there hasn't been any changes or anything like that.
Okay. No, no, I know there hasn't been any changes implemented, but I was just interested to know a little bit more about the detail and just so that folks could hear it too.
Sure.
What they had to say and what the implications would be if we were to change up.
Yeah. So what the, what the state and the turnpike and it seems to be more and more towns around are going to something it's called a salt priority. So they no longer spread sand. They basically take sand out of the trucks and they spread just salt. Apparently you incrementally use about ten percent more salt or somewhere in that range. It's not, it's not excessively more, but the process is different. So the crew would have to go sort of relearn how they attack the snow. Basically you go out before it starts snowing. You spread the salt down so that when, when, when the snow comes down, it will already be sort of in the process of melting. Opposed to kind of waiting until it starts and then going out and then covering the road with sand. So it's not slippery. The process just reduces the amount of reduce the amount of material you need. And then you'd also don't have to clean up the sand in the spring, you know, that you've spread all over people's yards and, and all that kind of stuff. So quite a few of the towns around here, I've gone to Augusta does it that way. Gardner Hollowell is in the process of transitioning Randolph does that. I can't remember. He listed a few other towns. Whales, I think. I was trying to recall what he said at the meeting, but there, there seem to be more and more of them that are kind of moving in that direction. So.
The, the, the only concern, well, there's more than one concern I have with that, but the main, two major concerns I have are that it puts a, it puts a, it increases the sodium load in the ground and, and the groundwater because that salt has to go someplace. So, you know, in a lot of places out of our state that have the amount of watershed access that we do to our roads are no salt areas. They don't allow them to use any salt. So where we have a lot of groundwater wells, homeowners that have wells and, and we have the lakes and the streams that, you know, the runoff will go into our real concern with increasing the salt load beyond what we already have. And in, in some cases, if it's a really, you know, wet snow, it, my experience, it works pretty well for, you know, cleaning up and, and not making the road be real slippery during the storm. But if it's real cold snow, salt doesn't work as well. And the pre-treatment, there's, there's, I've read a lot of pros and cons to pre-treatment and the thing with sand is that you get enough traction to, to be able to keep the roads passable. So I really would want to see something from that would really be convincing for, for me to support a change like that.
He, for those reasons. Yeah, absolutely. He did indicate that he's willing to come to one of your meetings if you want. He's done it to other towns when they made the transition to, to explain, you know, the process more intelligently than I can.
If all these towns use it or cities and cities, how, how is it destructive of the environment? Maybe a property like vehicles and.
It's a small, it would be a relatively small increase in the amount of salt we're using now. I mean, now we mix it in with the sand. So we're using a salt right now. And he indicated that most of these communities don't use more than ten percent more when they, when they just go away from the sand.
That doesn't sound like much when you say ten percent, but if you're using a hundred tons of
Yeah.
And to salt, that is a hundred and ten tons of salt or you're using two hundred tons of salt that we're, I don't know what we use, but it's got to be around two hundred tons, right?
At least if not more.
Yeah. So we'll say it's three hundred tons. Well, now you're talking thirty tons more of salt that you're putting out into the environment. So I, I really would want to, from my point of view, want to see some really convincing information that says that that would be a good thing to do in our situation. I, I just on the face of it, don't think it's, it's is good.
I think.
The main reason I, oh, sorry.
Sorry. The only benefit to it is that we need a smaller shed to, to a salt shed from what I read in the, in the newsletter that reduces the space. So you're, don't have the sand. So.
Potentially, yes, but we'll always have to have sand due to the amount of gravel roads we have.
Well, I would think so.
And, and as was mentioned, you know, in, in certain weather situations, you will still have to put some sand down. Just because the salt, depending on weather conditions, may be not effective enough. But so we'll, we'll always have to have both.
Yeah.
And I want to, I want to run this by Topsy, Washington District, just to see what their thoughts on the sodium increased sodium load to the, to the watershed would be, if any.
The main reason I even brought it up in that weekly memo, which is to tell you that we had the discussion and at the town, you'll have to consider that in your thought process about whether we actually want to build a salt shed next year because if this question isn't answered, you, you may not want to build a building that's twenty five percent too big that we're going to have, you know, for the next thirty years, you might want to wait another years until, until this question could be answered one way or the other. So that's kind of.
I think it's great that you, great that you're bringing it up. Now we just need to get all the questions answered and.
Yep. Did you have anything else?
Next thing is a select board report.
The only thing I was going to mention is with a truck being down for a transmission part that one of my fleet trucks, tractors was, went down in October for a transmission part. It was a their, their auto shift transmissions. Anyway, we were three months. They, they didn't have any new part anywhere in the world. And so the only way with that truck, we leased from Ryder, the only way they got that truck back up and running is they bought a wreck truck, took the part out of a wreck and got the truck back up and running. So it's, it's, you know, if you can get it by the end of the month, that's really good.
I think that's highly optimistic.
I do too.
I was going to bring up that the Monmouth Lions at our Monday night meeting voted to provide three one thousand dollar scholarships to Monmouth Academy. And I just like to put that out there so that during the spring scholarship applications, those will be available and they, they should apply. People at the academy should apply.
Bring up that the economic development committee will be meeting for the first time on the fifteenth. Right here.
We're right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I said our first, I misspoke. Thank you for correcting me, chief. It's actually going to be via Zoom for our first meeting and then we will figure, we'll figure out what folks want to do. February fifteenth.
Six o'clock.
Yep. And the six o'clock, six o'clock and the link will be on the website. It's not already there. It's not there now.
I think it is.
Okay.
I think I saw.
I think we put it up. Okay.
Anything else? Next is public comment. Is there any public who would like to comment here or up there?
I don't see any hands.
No. No. Okay. Onto a request from the Monmouth Water Association to fund a feasibility study to expand warrant service to North Monmouth. And there are people here from the water district.
I think we have some folks here from the water district. I'm happy to give them some introduction and to give a an overview of what's being discussed in our packet was a letter with an official request suggestion about this idea. The, the start of this conversation was a number of months ago when Chief Roy and I had a conversation about the potential for using ARPA funding and perhaps infrastructure funding already in the pipeline and expanding our hydrant system into North Monmouth. North Monmouth right now has one hydrant right on two oh two. And then a couple of hydrants, I think it might be in front of the mill building down there. They're private, so they're not even publicly accessible.
Correct.
Okay, so so we looked at potentially expanding hydrant system as well as figuring out a way to add an additional loop for public water supply. The, the idea is that we've got a pretty dense population, doesn't have a pot of water supply, especially in, in the downtown area of North Monmouth. And, and we've got the water main right there in two oh two. So we're not talking a huge project. We're talking an additional loop. Perhaps it would come down Placeville Hill Road and hang a left on Wilson Pond and then loop back to two oh two down North Main Street. Something like that, but.
Hang a right, but yeah.
Hang a, hang a right, forgive me. Thank you. So, so we had this conversation, the chief and I, and we thought about who it was in town that would be sort of the expert on such things. And so we went and met with the Monmouth Water Association there. And for those who don't know, their, their loop, their system basically serves about two hundred, two hundred and fifty systems in, in Monmouth Center up and down Main Street and a couple of branches that go down. I think it goes down Maple. So, so these folks have been in existence for like sixty years. Seem to know what they're doing and approaching them about some potential expansion into North Monmouth seemed fitting. We've had a number of requests from local businesses on two oh two about potentially connecting. Unfortunately, they're on the wrong side of two oh two. We've had a lot of folks express some concerns in the past about groundwater issues in North Monmouth. And this all sort of seemed to make sense when we had ARPA funding and the potential for infrastructure funding coming down, coming down the pipeline. And so, so we met with the association, I don't know, maybe three, three, four times to discuss how this thing might work. And, and that's why you're seeing this letter of request from the board. The idea is for public safety issues, for some economic development issues and for some public health issues that, that we might get the ball rolling on figuring out. Uh, figuring out a a means for uh, providing a a public water system loop in North Monmouth. Um, what uh, what did Dan Wells there? Uh, Dan, thank you for being here. Uh, he'll 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 speak a little bit on this. Uh, had a conversation with him about how you might go about doing something like that, and you might start off with some feasibility. Uh, studies, which is essentially what we're being asked for tonight. Um, you might also do some surveys of of residents to see what level of participation folks might be interested in. Um, if there was something uh there for them to connect to. Uh, maybe you do a couple of different scenarios of of how that might work out. And then you can come up with sort of a a nonprofit business plan for how you would. Uh, expand a loop in there. And support the maintenance and uh, uh, you know, uh, routine repair of it. Uh, based on, based on what it is that folks are contributing to that. The idea is simply to get a feasibility study going, and then when infrastructure money arrives that to have. A project that is close to shovel ready, that would allow. Our uh, town in in partnership perhaps with the association to apply for in- infrastructure money. That would actually pay the biggest, you know, chunk of the project, which is the, you know, the final engineering and the. Construction of it. So uh, what they're requesting tonight is a hundred thousand dollars of our ARPA funding. Um, to uh, get the ball rolling on this so that. Uh, when infrastructure money arrives, we can be positioned at the top of the list. Rather than at the bottom of the list for what I'm sure will be a very competitive um, process of communities applying. Uh, communities in need applying for for that funding.
Do we have that much ARPA left?
We do. Right, we we've spent about ninety, something ninety some thousand of the two hundred and approximately fifty that we've gotten our first. Um, batch.
Yeah, I'll move that we uh. Do that. Fund them with a hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study.
I have a question about. Water. I I should know this, considering my mother was. Involved forever, but I was too little to ask questions at that time, but um. With the sewer, you have to hook up if it's going past your house and you're closer than two hundred feet. What it is that this, it's not with water. So water they can choose to or not. Okay, that was my question. But I'd assume if people have dealt with. You know, drinking water issues in their house, then they'll be happy to to not have to worry about that. So. All right. Thank you. That answers my question.
Go ahead, Dan.
I I'm just gonna add a fourth potential uh benefit to this would be uh insurance, you know. The ISO rating might go down for people in a hydrant district opposed to not being in a hydrant district, so.
And it does make a difference, because you gave me the information and I passed it to my insurance company. That makes a big difference, so.
Would there, would there be any potential to run a concurrent sewer line? Is that something the feasibility study could encompass or not?
Uh, we'd have to, we'd have to loop in the the sewer folks. Um, that would sort of be a. A no-brainer if. Yeah.
The sewer already goes up a goodly distance up North Main Street because. Uh, well, Tex Tech dumps into the sewer. They provide about, uh, well, they used to provide forty, fifty percent of volume. Now I think it's about twelve.
So uh, we could, we could find out. I think that's a really.
And if I not, it might not be able to go the whole loop of the this uh. Concept, but if it's, if it uh can leverage some additional. Customers and and service. Except if you're gonna, you're gonna dig a hole, might as well put as much stuff in there as you can.
One thing to be noted is that the sewer district does need desperately more clients. And uh, if you could get them another forty or fifty clients, it would actually go a very long way to stabilizing. Any future increases in sewer rates in this town.
So. I I would, I would like to not limit this uh initial request. To just the hundred thousand. If we're gonna, if there's gonna be some additional monies to loop sewer in, then. Um, I'd like to somehow make it so that we can expand. Um, you know, expand the dollars that we're. That we're talking about allocating within ARPA to to have a feasibility on sewer line as well.
So how about if I were to, uh, I mean, we we don't know exactly what would be necessary for sewer to be included in this package.
Do you have some input?
I I have some.
Yeah.
The sewer runs down North Main Street, a long way up Wilson Pond Road.
Yep.
Not quite to Blaisdell Hill Road. So it, there is quite a bit of infrastructure in that area. So any additional would be Blaisdell. It's a Blaisdell Hill, Blaisdell, down to Wilson Pond, so that.
Yeah.
Um, they don't go in the same trench. It's not the same project. You're on two separate sides of the road, but. The disruption is the same. You're disrupting the traffic, you're disrupting the residents.
The asphalt.
Because that's what I thought when you mentioned side of the road on two O two, and I did think that they were on, are they on opposite sides of the road on two O two?
And of course, the big one is getting underneath two O two.
Yeah.
Correct, which we have for the water. We already have, and the sewers obviously.
We did that before we paved last time, because we had to do it before they paved, otherwise. The state would not let us open up Route two O two for another six or seven years or something like, I can't remember what it was now, but it was a long time.
I I remember that at the bottom of the hill, right?
That's right, so.
But it's at the top of the hill.
Back to two O two, can we, there's a T up on the top. There's, does not cross two O two.
So we would have to.
There was a valve and a T put in just for that, so if that did happen.
Then we would, we would be able to connect there, but we'd have to disrupt two O two to get to.
Correct, or bore underneath there somewhere.
Which would be, going to Harold's point, a good time to do whatever we need to do for the sewer at the same time, if we're gonna disrupt two O two.
Well, I would point out, we have a, I I would point out, I did make a motion. Um, I think at this time it would be appropriate to second that motion and pass it. And then revisit it when we have some numbers for additional monies that might be needed to add it to the study. We can certainly. Make another motion at a future time to add money to the study.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, so uh, Tim made a motion and Ken seconded it to uh. Approve the request of the Monmouth Water Association to fund a feasibility study to expand water service to North Monmouth. All is in favor. I don't know if if Libby, our secretary, needs. Uh, she wouldn't rec, she wouldn't know about the.
The identity of people.
That was uh, uh, Dan Wells.
Dan Wells.
And. Mary, okay, Mary, but you didn't speak, did you? But no. Joel, Lotto Stott, and. Our postmaster.
And they're, and they're, they're all from the Monmouth Water Association.
I knew that, but I just wanted Libby to know what she.
So what, so what's the route that this, that you're proposing, just for clarity? Yeah.
What we looked at, what we talked about is the hook under that uh, main that's in front of the uh.
And the the next house down from the church.
Yeah, so across there, run down North Main Street, close to Mon Road, back to Blaisdell Road. But there's also a loop that would go, take it up the side streets of New.
New Street.
And that, that may be feasible too. It might be enough density there to. I would love to see. Put a six inch of.
By the station, because that's right there.
It's a good intersection. We're able to tap into and go forward in directions.
Exactly.
Also, our water's horrible up there, so it'd be nice to get some decent.
Or drinking water, pressure or water?
Water.
Oh, drinking water.
Yeah, come use our toilet facilities of town. Look at the color of the.
Not often you get an invitation like that.
We'll even take you for a spin on that truck.
Okay, well, Danny Niles is at my house tomorrow, so I'll ask him to take me right over.
Uh, I think some of uh, some of what this feasibility study might do is come up with a path that makes sense based on density and the need. Uh, for for everybody involved, whether that's the fire department or the homeowners or what have you, businesses as well.
That's a good little chunk. I mean, because this is quite a few houses on New Street, and then.
So just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that we we tie sewer and water together as a, you know, pass or fail project. I'm suggesting is that if we're looking at doing this anyway, we should at least investigate. The sewer part, extension part of it, and see if 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 it makes sense, then we go after the. Infrastructure funding to do what we can do with that as well.
Does the, does the sewer? Section go up New Street and around to.
Well, it goes up part of New Street. I know that.
Goes up, yeah, it's a couple of manholes up that way.
Okay.
The first manhole, uh, there's, there's a T for the uh sewer and a sewer line that goes up a new road that's there that. Can't remember what the name of it is, but there's six lots on it. None of it been developed yet, but the potential's there.
Okay. And then on to discussing forever chemicals that may be discovered in wells. Did you want to?
Sure, I I had a chance to, I mean, of course, we've been for months now looking at water as an issue in North Monmouth. And just recently, like in the last couple of weeks, it was drawn to my attention that the Department of Environmental Protection. Published a map of Maine with uh hundreds of locations where. These uh chemicals, forever chemicals called PFAS, PFOS and PFAS. Um, have been, have been detected in the groundwater. So. Uh, if you go to the DEP site, you can see across Maine, there's lots of locations. Uh, uh, the one location that was identified in Monmouth. Is a location on North Main Street. It doesn't give me a specific address, but uh, there's a very specific GIS location there. And you can see it on the map, and the results of the uh tests are in our packet tonight, at least the. There's a a panel of tests, and this is the one that uh popped out at me as the most concerning. This is, you know, kind of a new science for everybody. We've known that PFAS is an issue for. Um, for, I don't know, three or four years now, and kind of at the legislature, when I was serving, we were. Debating what the appropriate uh level of safety is when you find it in someone's drinking water. And uh, and that level was set, I think maybe about a year ago in statute. And I think that's probably what the trigger is for the publication of these tests, is now that we know what the acceptable level is. You know, what do these, what do these tests actually, actually mean? So uh, another reason I asked Dan to uh, to to come to the meeting is that Dan deals with these figures on a day-to-day basis. Um, in his role at the Winthrop Utilities District. Because it's, you know, it's his job to make sure that Winthrop Utilities water is is perfectly safe. And so Dan, um, I don't know if you want to reflect a little bit, but the the test that we have highlighted here shows. Uh, uh, three hundred parts, uh, is it billion or trillion? I think it might be trillion. Three hundred parts per trillion in one of the samples that's.
It says, what what does it mean, groundwater? It doesn't mean well, or it just means.
I think.
It's a well.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when I I looked at that a little bit, and you have that test for three hundred, another parameter for a hundred and fifty, another parameter for ninety. So that well is really close to what they're talking about in Fairfield. So whether that's concentrated due to a spill or whatever, nobody can give you any information. But you can't, so the residents in that area would have to test their own wells out of their own pocket, and if they come up positive, you know, above the limit, then they get reimbursed. That's a five hundred dollar test. I don't know, a whole lot of people have an extra five hundred dollars laying around. They could just say, no, we'll test it just for the heck of it. That's, that's the core problem that.
Yeah.
Ken and I talked about.
So the state does have a program for reimbursement if your well comes back positive after it's been tested. By a licensed person, you know, by uh using a licensed lab or a licensed uh process. Yeah, yeah.
This test was done in uh twenty eighteen.
That's correct.
So it's almost four years old.
It's four years old. Um, I I don't have an explanation for why it was just published. Last week. Um, there's some questions there. Yeah, you know, we also need to keep in mind that this is kind of a moving target, like the standard for safety wasn't established until sometime last year, I think.
Well, that's probably why it just popped up on the radar, because now that limit has been set, so.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that. The town fund once, one test for the next source closest to this one. And see if that comes up with anything, and if it does, then we might want to go further. If it doesn't come up with anything. Then it's be less of a problem than we think. But uh, certainly help with one test, I think would be uh well within our capabilities.
It would have to be, it would have to be on a town property. We can't use public monies for a private purpose.
Yeah.
So we can't just give a resident money to do something that is there that they owe. Do we have town property? We get the fire station.
Yeah, well, how close is that to that?
The pump station for the sewer too, is down closer to two O two.
So so is this well that was tested, is it a shallow well or a deep well or dug well? I mean, it makes a difference.
Sure, I I don't know, you know, we don't uh. There's not a lot of information on the specifics here, Harold, so I I don't think they want to violate anybody's privacy rights. They just simply want people to know the results of the test at that particular location. I think I did include in your packet. This thing just happened to come through the day after I talked to you. Yeah, tell me more. I saw that.
Yeah.
The Maine Water Resource. Maine Rural Water Association is putting on a Zoom, a free Zoom class on what all this stuff means. It's it's about the new legislation that the. That was passed. Any mandates, the proper sampling a- and anything else that you probably would want to know about this, and this is on. Wednesday, March second at eleven AM, and if anybody wants, I could put this on the on the town website, so people could find the link and stuff. That's if you think that would be.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a very good idea.
But what I would, going back to my previous point, uh, what I've been reading about this, it is very concerning. Uh, they're finding it in eggs. And a number of other places. Uh, main egg sales are probably decreasing as we speak, because it's a very big concern. Um. I would be uh, I would be very con, uh, I'd be very concerned about all this and and would like to. Have you the town manager see to pursue something, see if we can some way, somewhere close to that where we can obtain a test. I don't know, I don't know if there's uh some state program that would let us do it on a private well close by, or. If we do have any town property close by. Or if Tex Tech is close enough, and they might be willing to do one. I I don't know, but I think it's important for us to do something. And find out if this is a big issue or not.
Do we know if sludge has been spread on Monmouth farmland?
And that that map shows the same. So there's another map just like that that does show the sludge sites. I don't believe there are any sludge sites close.
No.
To that area.
No.
Bill Dawson from the drinking water program, I talked to him. He's the one in control of a a big sum of money for PFAS.
Okay.
And I told him about the EP thing and he was going to talk to them.
Okay.
So that's a perfect point of contact if you guys want to.
And he, he works for who?
For your water program.
Okay.
That, that's no, uh, upper narrows. Uh, the, the watershed for, for that is, i- is a safe like from these forever chemicals.
We took one sample and there's one constituent in, out of, there's like fifty of them. And I don't know which ones are regulated or not. I haven't gone back and looked. It was like five. And the limit's twenty-five or the limit's far above where we have it.
So nothing that exceeds the level of safety.
And we have carbon in our slow sand filter. And that's what takes it out of the water. So with the carbon, that's a double benefit. It takes some precursors for trihalomethanes, which is the carcinogen out of the water. So it'll also take that out of the water. By luck.
Makes me want to go drink some water now.
Well, I, I think if we were going to test, I mean, the only property that I know of the town owns is the fire station. I mean, we don't own the library anymore because the museum owns the library. So.
Is there, is there running water in the museum? Or in the library?
I don't know.
Okay.
So, um.
Well, it seems to me like uh, the, the, the easy way to do it would be to, to take a single sample from the fire station and see what we find. Um, because there's no complication. But I am uh, like Tim, I share concern for the neighbors down there. And if there's some means for us, whether it's through uh, uh, a state program or um, if we have uh, funding that source through whatever remains in our, our but fund to.
Should, should the uh, should the North Monmouth Fire Station become our only choice or the choice we decide upon? Let's do a comprehensive water test. Test for everything.
Yeah.
Radon and lead and whatever.
Yeah.
We're kind of well is that, Dan?
Wouldn't even tell you.
You know where it's located?
Danny Niles.
I'll ask Danny.
Okay, so what I'm saying is don't take a sample from the pipes.
Yeah.
Don't draw it from the faucet or from the, from, from the, after it goes through the pipes into the fire station.
Oh, yeah.
Find the well, uncover the well, take the sample from the well.
Definitely go up the toilet.
Just disregard the sewer smell when you walk in. We think it's our batteries on our two thousand eleven fire truck.
Selfish, selfish now. Might be good to get them out before they burn the thing up though.
Yeah, I can check with.
They're doing a truck check tonight.
Cause that's, that's a real thing. I mean.
Trust me, I know.
So, um, you know, one thought uh, in working with the state program that will reimburse if you find PFAS in your sample is to and I, and maybe you can talk to the, the, the water folks is to uh, find a way to get people started. And then if there's a positive result, we'll get refunded from the state.
And they might, because of the they might be developing the program to allow people to be tested in areas where they're known. Who knows?
Is there a way? You have to put a list together of testing sites or people who will come out and do this test. I'd be, I'm interested. I, I'd spend the five hundred dollars to find out of my, my well from the, from the Aggie farm.
So uh, there's a, there's a, a, a list of licensed laboratories on the DEP website.
On the DEP website?
Yeah, you can call them up. And this is a test that, that we've done at our house.
Okay.
It's super expensive. There is a very specific procedure that you have to follow. You have to use their containers because it's measuring infinitesimal amounts of, of this substance, which is all over the place. And in some plastic containers, so you have to use very specific process to get it done. And you actually, you can't hold on to the sample. You have to like, take it straight to the lab. So it can be processed because it can't sit around or, you know, be under certain temperature conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, uh, the next thing is uh, uh, budget review for the police. Animal Control Officer, Dispatch Fire CEO and Boards and Committees. One thing I'd like to bring up before we start is uh, every year I always ask the town manager to ensure that all the departments use the same figures for electrical expenses, fuel and other consumables so that we're consistent across all the departments. Sometimes the departments have used different figures for fuel i- in between each other and it makes, kind of muddies the water on the budget. And I don't know if it's appropriate to bring it up now, but the, the uh, for wages for all of these uh, there's a two point five percent quota.
That's what the department's based it on. That's what I'm going to ask them to do originally. So they, they built it on that. I'm I will probably, as we move along, um, we're just, I'm just starting uh, uh, the union negotiations. So kind of depending on how those flush out, it may change what I would request for you to give to everybody else. But so we'll have to kind of wait and see on that part.
Wait, so don't do anything to change it? Because I, I'm in favor of, actually, I don't know if it's appropriate, but uh, uh, maybe a five percent quota considering what's been going on.
I, I have done a little polling of what some of the other communities are doing and um, it kind of depends where you are in the state, but uh, they are more in line with somewhere between four and, and some communities are even going with, with what the CPI is right now, which is seven point nine or whatever it is. So uh, I will probably bring back a higher percentage of that because I suspect that the union is going to request something that's closer to what CPI is too. So just to keep everybody kind of in line, but I don't know. They haven't, um, we haven't started yet with the union, so I have no idea what they're going to come back.
The CPI is it's like.
Inflation is like seven point, that's nine percent right now. High.
That's actually conservative. A more realistic number is probably twelve percent.
You're probably right because they take fuel and some other things out of that number.
That's right.
They used to calculate it.
That's one of the reasons I brought up the fuel concerns is because fuel is up a hundred percent from last year.
Uh, Chair.
Yes.
Got an answer on the north station is a dug well. And it's about a hundred and fifty feet behind the back of the building. There's some reflectors marked in the area because loaders from public work has hit it a few times. So you should know where it is.
Well, that'd be a great well to test because it's a dug well.
But it's currently buried by loads of snow.
Yeah, well, so we'll test it when it's not buried by loads of snow.
Hopefully soon.
After the ice skating party.
Obviously, we don't have to emergency rush out and dig it out now, but when you can, when you can open that well up, to me, that's the thing to do is to open the well up. Take, take a sample from the bottom of the well, near the bottom of the well.
Okay. Yeah, we want to go on to uh, the AC, what's first?
Police, police budgets. You want to just go through the stuff that you wanted to uh, change basically, unless you want to go line by line. Do you, you just want to know what the changes are?
I just, yeah.
I think we need to just know changes.
Thank you, Dan.
We like Dan.
You want to start with animal control? Um, or anybody you want to do it with?
Start with this, I'll go down through our budget here. Line two forty-three repair maintenance and computers is a increase in that. We need uh, cruiser printer mounts, which is two thirty a piece. Three new cruiser printers, five fifty each, and three new, there's a licensed scanners, five fifty each. What the state is doing is they're going to an e-ticket system where uh, you don't actually physically write out a ticket anymore because when you write out a ticket, they give, the state is giving us five days to get that ticket to uh, the court. And if it's not at the court within five days, they just throw it out. So the state is transo- transitioning to this system so that they can ensure that the, these tickets get in in a timely fashion. What happens is one of our officers goes out on the road, writes a ticket, brings it into the station. It has to be processed, put in an envelope and then sent to the court. Well, if the court doesn't receive it within that five day period, they just dismiss it. Now you take into effect that, okay, we're writing it on a Thursday, the town office is closed on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday's a holiday. You're out of luck.
And the postal service delivers it.
A week later.
Sorry.
I don't think he cares.
So this is, this is, this is the, the avenue that the state is going down. Okay, is, is the e-ticket and uh, they are, they are, they do have um, programs out there to uh, assist departments with the purchase of these um. Unfortunately, right now, they, they, you have to have um, I got an email on it today that in order to submit for this grant, you have to attend training, which is on the second and third of February. So they, they said they're going to open up some other dates here in the future. So there may be a possibility that some of this will be funded.
Oh, you still have to have it in your budget and then the funding would have to, the grant funding would have to be in the uh, on the other side on the receipts revenues. So what you have here is includes uh, accounts for the grant or not?
No.
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 A- a- and this means that right in the in the cruiser, the the officer would be able to print out.
Yeah, what, what it does, it, you take the driver's license, you put it in this little card reader and it populates the field and the e-ticket screen. Yeah. Uh, and then you just hit a button and it prints it out, prints, prints a ticket out. And you walk up and you just give them a copy of the ticket and it automatically sends it to the state. So there's no, there's no delay at all. They get it instantly. Yeah, it is. Technology is wonderful. I don't understand it, but it's wonderful. Um, line two forty-seven, um. I put in uh, four new portable radios, uh, two thousand apiece. I also submitted that as a grant through EMA as well. Hoping that we get, get them through EMA. If we get them through EMA, we don't have to expend this money in the budget.
Does this answer the issue with?
The P twenty-five.
Yes, okay. All right.
Um, line two fifty-nine, sixty dollars a month for internet running directly to the uh, police station. So we're not using wifi. Um, sharing wifi with the town office. Um, sixty dollars a month, um, it was a thirty dollar setup fee.
Who's that through?
That was through Comtel.
Comtel.
Connectivity point, whatever is it.
It's not going to be sixty dollars a month. It's going to be more.
What they quoted us.
I know, it's going to be more.
And that was the, the highest bond rate they, they provide.
Yeah, what, twelve?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's, well, that's how you would get downtown through them is twelve. I, I would seriously take and uh, and make that uh, probably uh, eighty dollars a month. I mean, they may very well do sixty and hold it for a year and you may be fine, but I just I've been surprised by them before. But is spectrum a better?
Uh, one of the, one of the issues we're having i- is um, it's the, the share file system that we use with the court system where everything is, is done uh, downloaded through the internet instead of having to run to Augusta to bring physical reports in. Everything's done, down, downloaded um, videos. The size of the videos we have nowadays and uh, everything you do, um, if you interview someone three separate times, you have to have three separate videos. Well, it takes forever to download those right now because sending it through the air to the town office and then sharing that with the town office. And I mean, there are files and it'll take six hours to you know, to transmit out and it just, it's very prohibitive.
Well, Comtel's only going to give you a meg up. I think it's twelve down and one up. Might be three, but I'm pretty sure it's one.
Yeah, it's um, Winthrop's using that now. The, Winthrop is, is transitioning over to fiber optics, which is going to speed things up incredibly. Um, there is a, there, I talked to Comtel and, and they do have fiber optics, but right now, um, they couldn't provide me the cost on what it would cost for much fiber optics.
There's actually fiber in the uh, CO right there on Main Street and it goes up Academy Road uh, to actually all three of the schools.
Yep.
All four of the schools. With the two new ones and the two old ones. So it pretty much more or less goes right by you.
Yep.
And I will tell you, I can give you a little bit more information on that. Customer of mine in North Monmouth uh, had them run fiber to their house uh, to their business rather, office. And it was about a, I can't remember, was one and a half or two miles. Uh, it cost them eight thousand dollars. It's not cheap.
No. No, that's what Winthrop is, is doing right now. That's just because it that file share is just taking up so much time to download all these videos that we need to download. The reports aren't as much of an issue as the videos are because that's just
bigger files.
Each file. You talk three hours of, of, of a OUI arrest, you know, and you're trying to download that. Quite complicated.
They go to the attorney general. Those, those uh,
Files?
That, yeah.
They, they go to the DA's office. Yep. All right, moving on to line three fifty-six, um, that's for our new digital evidence camera and uh, wash guy cruiser camera and transmitter, twenty-three fifty and uh, everything we do now by, by law has to be recorded. Uh, if you stop a vehicle out on the road, you better have a camera in it because otherwise you're subject to losing everything in court if it's not on video. Everybody's going to have body camera, Cruz is going to have the videos in them and uh, the digital evidence camera that I put in there, we have two cameras now, uh, they're five megapixel cam- cameras. In order for the crime lab to um, process any crime photos, crime scene photos, they have to be a minimum of fifteen megapixels. In order for that, they won't even, they won't even entertain five megapixels anymore.
So the reason being for that is they don't blow up well.
Yes.
You can't see the details.
Absolutely. So they, they, they put a minimum limit of fifteen megapixels on that, uh, and that's what the, the cameras that I'm looking at uh, uh, right now at twenty-four megapixels and they're running between six and eight hundred dollars a camera. We're also putting in for a new radar unit, which uh, with twenty-eight hundred bucks, um, we bought one radar unit out of the, the money that um, we got from direct cruiser, from the insurance money. We did purchase one, um, but that'll still leave us one. I have no, no uh, radar unit in my car, which I, I need to get. Putting in for ten new Glock nine millimeter handguns, twenty-three hundred. The guns that we have now are ten to fifteen years old. They're starting to fail. We've had to replace parts on, and I just don't want my guys in a position where they're in a bad situation, they have this thing, this twenty-three hundred takes into account the trade-in that we'll get on the weapons that we presently carrying. They're figuring we'll get about two hundred and fifty dollars a year for the ones we're, we're carrying now.
Can you replace it, replace them with the same thing, or?
We are going with the nine millimeter instead of the Glock forties. We're going with the Glock nine millimeters. The ballistic, ballistics on the nines are nominal, the differences between the nine and the forty now with the, the new ammunition that's out there. Nine millimeter ammunition is cheaper. If we went with the forty caliber, we would have to change our leather, our holsters because the, the new forties, new generation five Glock forties are wider, the slides are wider on them. So our leather gear will not accept that, that new, new weapon. Nine millimeters will fit into the present holsters we have right now.
Do you have any thought at all to doing what, to go on with what the state police have, the HK forty-five?
I, I prefer Glock, just not, two things. They've never failed me, number one, they're proven, and we're trained on the Glocks. I don't want to go away from that and have to retrain on a new weapon. The other thing is, is replacing the, the, the AR fifteens, long guns that we have. We have two of them that the town owns right now. And there are two that individually owned that have, by the officers, and they've been allowed to carry them. And I have, I have a problem with allowing people to utilize their own equipment for our service. The town, if we're gonna require the equipment, we ought to provide the equipment to them. Two things it does, it's gonna guarantee that every weapon and every vehicle is gonna be the same. Every vehicle is gonna be set up the same so that if I hop into one car, it's gonna be exactly the same as the car I just came out of, so there'll be no guesswork. No looking down, trying to find something. Everything's gonna be standardized, everything's gonna be exactly the same in all the cars. And that's just a liability issue on my part. I just look at trying to reduce the liability to the town any way we can, and the new radios that we, we, we have talk to you. So you don't even have to look down to see what channel you're on. You push the top button and it tells you what channel it speaks to you. Tells you you're on statewide, you're on Winter Prime, you're, so you're not looking away from what you're doing to, to, to have to figure out what frequency you're on. Same with the portables we're getting. You turn the dial on them, it tells you what, what frequency you're on, so you're not looking down, you're not taking your eyes off from the target or what you're, what you're focusing on. It's just all trying to, to get everything in, in line, use best practices and keeping these guys safe out there and reducing liability on the town. The plan is, the plan was to have all five cars set up the same, so each car, you, you get in it, the long gun's gonna, gonna be in the same spot in my car as it is, and the sergeant's car, as in the patrol car, they're all gonna be identically outfitted.
So you need to buy three?
We're getting rid of, we're getting rid of the two old ones, because they're ten, fifteen years old.
So you're buying five?
Buying five, yep. That way I can guarantee that they're all identical, they're all the same, there are no differences.
Optics?
The optics on them are the red dot, I got the specifics on them. Everything's all, all the same. The optics on them are the same, the slings on them are the same, I mean, there's no difference. If you, if I pick up yours or you pick up mine, they're exactly the same. And then I guess we don't have to talk about six oh nine because that's this one here we bought will, will have set up by mid-March, and that'll, that'll get us through the interim until we get another new car. And I was looking at potentially leasing instead of buying outright, leasing it through a three-year lease on those. So it would reduce the immediate cost to the, to the town, so it won't be a, it'd be a standard price all the way across, fifteen, five, three years, and then it's ours after the end of the three years. I'm looking to get, with assigned cruisers to each one of the, one of the offices, I'm looking to get sixty-eight years out of each cruiser. Instead of replacing one every two years. The other issue I wanted to bring up is the software issue. I talked to the town manager about it. We are presently using IMC as our software provider. At a tune of about five thousand dollars a year, maybe a little bit more than that. If I jump onto the, I've gotten quotes from Spillman's system for our records management, jumping onto Winterp's, the initial setup fee is gonna be eighty-two hundred dollars in the first year. But subsequent years, it drops down to four hundred and twenty-two dollars a year for maintenance fees instead of paying five thousand a year for IMC. We have the initial upfront cost of eighty-two hundred dollars and then four, four hundred and twenty-two dollars a year after that. For, so it, it's a kind of a no-brainer. To me, it's I'm, I'm a Spillman guy, I've been working with Spillman, she's bucking me all over.
No, I'm not.
It's a much, much user-friendly system from my perspective than IMC. You have to jump around to so many different screens to get the information you need out of IMC, whereas Spillman, it's one-tap shopping, it's easy to use.
He's just trying to get me to stay longer.
So that, that amount has, was not in my budget because I hadn't gotten the quote back from Spillman until two or three days ago. And I, I immediately sent it over to Justin and said, this is what.
So it's only, it's, it's an additional three thousand first year, but after that, it's, it's
Ten thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars savings a year.
Right. But it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think it's open.
And it will be the software that he wants in the first place, so he'll save money, and it'll be the one that he wants to use. And actually, as I understand it, too, the very large majority of municipalities in the state use Spillman over IMC.
Correct. And that's what the state police just converted over to was Spillman. All right, so let's see.
Oh, what about your fuel line? I'm curious to see what the difference between last year and this year is.
I did make a reduction here in cruiser maintenance. If we're getting a new cruiser in, in this coming budget, I dropped that down by four thousand dollars.
You have the heating fuel as well as vehicle fuel?
Yes.
Vehicle fuel increased by thirty-seven hundred dollars essentially.
Oh, it's increased by thirty-seven hundred. What was it last year?
Last year it was
twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand eighty-four dollars, and it's, he's put in for fifteen thousand seven eighty-five.
That's not gonna be enough.
Well, I don't know. This, this year, the, the, the jump from nine thousand to twelve thousand pretty much took up the, the majority of the, the
Increase?
The increase, the increase is actually about eighty percent, seventy to eighty percent. Because we, we don't pay tax and so forth, so.
But it's not the taxes that are increasing the price of fuel.
I, I, I understand, and I deal with the price of fuel on wholesale level every week, so I'm telling you that it's gone up about seventy to seventy-five percent on, on the year, and which of your cost figures bear out. So that, it, I don't, I wouldn't expect that it would go up more than, than what you've got here next year, I mean.
And right now, we're what, halfway through fiscal year, correct?
A little more.
A little more than half, and we haven't expended half of the budget yet, so.
Right about fifty-six hundred right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think personally that the number you've put, plugged in there fifteen thousand.
Fifteen seventy-five, yeah.
Yes. Like a good starting place, and, and we've got until the end of April basically to finalize the number, so if the Department of Energy puts out a forecast number every month, what they expect the next twelve months to be. So when we get to the first April, if you go back and revisit what the DOE has put out for a twelve-month forecast number, then you can revise if you need to. But this, to me, is a good starting point.
And the heating fuel line, we had eighteen eighty-one budgeted for this year, and I increased that up to a thousand fifteen, just on, on speculation, you know, it's hard to predict what it's gonna do.
You're running on an oil burner there?
We all know what it's gonna do, but at times
Oil is double and kerosene is double from what it was last year.
And, and say we'll put in a heat pump, it's not gonna be helpful anymore since generation supply costs gone up by eighty percent.
Electricity will probably be more than twenty cents a kilowatt hour within the next few years. You wanna do ACO or whatever? You've, you've got three, right? Sort of? Dispatch, that's just kind of a number. Well, you must have an estimate in there too for wages.
Two and a half percent was what I, what I was told to
Then, then what is that? What's the last year to this year?
Four, five thousand dollars.
Yeah, we jumped the full-time wages from one fifteen-six, three sixteen to one sixty-one, five ninety-nine.
Five thousand and two thousand.
So if, if we do more like five percent, that would be, instead of being about five, gotta be about ten.
You can jump mine by ten.
So, so
Unfortunately, mine's not going up by ten, mine's going down.
So the
The feds don't, don't give us much.
So the part-time you decreased, does that mean because you've got fewer part-time?
No, we had, we had increased it last year because Kirk was going to the academy.
Oh, yeah.
So we put more money into it to cover the reserve
Yep.
line, and we brought Mike in, and where, let's knock on wood, I don't have anybody going to, needing to go to the academy this upcoming year. We took that, I took that out of that budget.
All right, okay.
That was about eight thousand I took out of that one.
So that basically would offset that, pretty much offset your wage increase at five percent instead of two point five.
Okay, so under ACO, facility rental, I haven't got any idea on that. I just increased that by, by about three percent. That's to the Kennebec Valley Humane Society. I don't know, I, I've got no feedback from them on what, what, what it's gonna be this year. On the part-time, on the wages for the ACO, I increased, I think it was twenty-five percent, I think, because she wasn't making, she was spending more money in gas than she was making from the town to help that out, help that.
That's something she requested, right?
Yes. And the, 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 the ability to rely on her to do I, I, I don't wanna lose her. I don't, I don't want to do dog flings.
You're budgeting basically what you spent last year, so that's, to me, is reasonable.
The ACO doesn't get mileage?
No, if you get the set fee.
Dispatch, that's the, that's the new number. What'd they do, three percent? They redid the fee structure, I think.
They did, they redid the fee structure, and the reason being is that they are going to add a dispatcher on and dispatch, which will allow their a second person during the, the busy times, so the second person will be their supervisor, their dispatch supervisor, who also does IT for, for, you know, Bill, the, the IT for, for the department.
They do have two stations there.
Yes.
In the, in the
Yeah, the two stations are already set up, and in busy times, they'll pull someone off, night supervisor, whatever, if there's a structural fire or whatever, bad crash, night supervisor will come in and, and hit the second desk and answer phones because when you got a major event going on, those nine and one lines light up, so they definitely need a fifth, fifth position in there. And that's why you're seeing that increase on that one.
Anything? You, you wanna go next?
Yeah.
Do you want a paper?
I would, thank you. I left my notes at the
Dispatch is up actually about eight percent, right?
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't figure out the percentage.
It's around eight percent.
I don't do that kind of math in my head.
Usually it works out pretty close.
All right, so fire department, number thirty fifty.
Oh, excuse me, excuse, excuse me. So what's the bottom line in, in the police budget from this year to last year?
Three eighty-seven, five thirty-seven last year, into this year at four oh nine eighteen for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So go, go ahead, Ken, sorry about that.
That's okay. Bottom line with the fire department, I'm looking at an eight thousand dollar increase over last year's budget. That's about a six percent increase. We've been pretty much flatlined the last four years. I've been trying to maintain, you know, almost a zero percent increase over the last four years. Certainly over the last two years, just with COVID. And it's just not sustainable to keep trying to maintain a zero balance, and as you guys know with inflation and everything, and you just can't keep, keep that bottom line zero. In fact, we didn't even have any stipend increases last year because we were trying to stay as close to zero as possible, so this year, I'm putting in for a slight increase of six percent. Again, equates to about eight thousand from the previous year budget. The biggest part of that, about half of that is, is for stipend increase, that's four thousand dollars, and that's for all my officers, including myself. I didn't take any increase last year, and I'm looking at a fifteen hundred dollar increase just for my wages, and that brings my stipend up to fifteen thousand, and that's been my goal for the last ten years, was to get to fifteen thousand, so if, if approved, I'll be if if approved, I'll be at that level finally. So I'm right on the right on the cusp of, you know, do we jump to a part-time chief position, you know, twenty hours a week or just I'd like to say I'll stay happy with just a fifteen thousand dollar stipend and not be mandated to put in twenty hours a week, though I do that and then some.
Well, that was gonna be what I wanted to point out.
Kind of at that.
Was was the fact that you routinely put in probably between eighteen and twenty-five hours a week, depending on what's going on. And then if you add in the community service and other things you do, it's 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 quite a bit.
Yeah.
I think a couple of years ago, we encouraged you.
You did. I know you did.
Fifteen right away, and I said, no, I'm not gonna do that, so.
I just I just think it's important for the public to know how much actual time you and your officers put in, and it's quite a bit.
It is, yeah, and I think the public knows that. Yeah, they might not know all the details as far as what we're paid, you know.
Hell, I don't feel we emphasize it enough sometimes.
We appreciate that. So I did the two point five percent coal increase. It's a minute amount. It's like four hundred dollars extra, you know, in that line item. Well, actually, no, it went from twenty-two six to twenty-three five, so nine hundred dollars. You know, so if we go to the five percent, it'd be just a little bit more. And again, we'd be appreciative of that, you know, with the increase in inflation. So stipends, we've talked about that, and then just a couple of other items got changed and and one of them was building. We added a thousand dollars to build in. Our buildings are just not, you know. They're old, you know, and we got, we still got the furnace issue at the north station that's not resolved. We got a crack in that heat exchanger, so that's gonna be potentially an eight, nine thousand dollar fix.
Is that in your budget?
It's not.
I think you should put it in there. We we've actually listened to you talk about that furnace for two or three years at least. I think you should put it in there.
You have to fix it.
Yeah, well, we're we're actually waiting on a on another quote for, so I got a quote to replace it as is with a hot air furnace, oil fired. And the other quote I was waiting on was convert to gas and put more dying heaters and put one at the back station, one at the front of the station. And I haven't got that quote back yet. We we actually had two quotes coming in, one fell off, the guy decided not to provide the quote. I'm just waiting on one more, but I think it's gonna be comparable price point wise. It's just a matter of do we wanna keep heating the building with oil? As you know, it's not an insulated building, cinder block. That's really, you know, energy wise, it's a it's an expensive town bill to heat. And I don't know if gas is gonna be any better, but.
Well, we did save quite a bit on the heating bills for the town garage and the center station when we went from oil to gas. I remember it was a lot of, it was actually very substantial.
We also.
And that was before we insulated them.
I was gonna say, we also insulated.
But that was that was before we insulated, it's still saved quite a bit.
Right, I'll I'll add that in and I'll submit it. And it does make sense to to have that, at least in the budget, you know, I mean. Right now, we think we can skate by till the next fiscal year to to have that replaced. We've done some metering of the of the air quality and we're okay. And it's not an occupied building where we sleep there, so we feel okay that we can probably slide by it for six months, you know.
So you're not gonna replace the furnace?
We don't feel the immediate need right now to do it, so certainly if we put it in the budget, we can make that effective joint for our sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, unless something happens and we start getting, you know, thirty-five parts per million or more up there, then we're gonna do an emergency fix, but. But I'll I'll do that.
And we'll keep an eye on the budget as we go this year because we never know if we get to the end of the year, we may be able to pull trigger with money that we already have. I'll keep an eye on that too.
And then the other slight increase was our computer R and M and and we're gonna add a computer for our north station. So we have that accessibility for both stations. And then I think the last big increase was just the fire prevention trailer, and as you know, we got that that trailer donated this year, so I added a little bit of increase in that to help the maintenance and R and M of that new vehicle. That was pretty much it. Some of the some of the unknowns is like the the fuel costs. I've been struggling with this and I haven't shared this with Justin, and as Dan's here now, I got my first fuel report. Thank you. It's available today, so that's that's awesome. But it's been very frustrating the past year that I just haven't been getting regular fuel reports on usage of diesel fuel. So I hope going forward with Dan and the new system, that's gonna change because it makes it hard for budgeting when you don't even know what you're you're using for fuel. I still think last year, for the last, the latter part of the year, I don't even know if we got charged it. So it's, uh, thank you.
Well, you you know what you what you have on here, you expended in last year was eighteen hundred and eighty-one dollars, if that's.
I don't.
The right line.
One thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, one thousand, one thousand nine dollars. I was wrong, like, one thousand nine dollars.
Just, that's not even accurate, I'm telling you. It's there's there's something wrong there.
No, that can't be right.
Yeah, cuz it's half of what it was the year before, expended.
Public Works paid for it.
Yeah, I think public, something got shifted around.
Got a heck of a discount.
Well, it's all about which pocket it's coming out of.
Right.
Essentially.
And it's such a hard, it's a hard thing to budget for, you just don't know what you're gonna, how many calls you're gonna.
Do we, yeah, we're in a consortium or whatever with a bunch of places that. That's.
They haven't bid that out yet, so we don't have our our prices for next year.
I remember last year, it took a long time, I think, for.
Yeah, I've already reached out to him and he said it would be sometime, this was when I first got it, at least another month before they were they were gonna even try, so. I don't think we'll probably know till like March or something. So Dan, overall, this looks like an eight thousand dollar without the without accounting the the heating system, right? An eight thousand dollar increase and that's like six percent from the base of last year.
Correct, and if I have to add the heat and then double that. That's pretty much the fire department in a nutshell. I think we're doing fairly good, especially this year, we've only expended fifty-six thousand. I'm sure I'll spend it before the end of the year.
You have not spent in Florida, that's the only way.
Yep, sounds good.
So there's not, there's not very much to reach for through the budgets. What you'll see here is the first, this is the first of 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 some of these budgets that you're gonna see moving forward. Where I'm looking to consolidate some of these costs that are in these sections because it really is all coming out of the same place. So I've moved the training out of here and moved it into the admin. So you'll see it when we get to the admin budget. I've done the same thing with like the treasurer, but I'm the treasurer, but it had its own budget. I'm looking to combine that all in the admin because it's very hard to track, you know, if I take a pen as the treasurer or or as the town manager, it's it's coming out a different lot, so I'm just gonna try to put it together. So that's really the only change you're gonna see in here, that we move that training into the admin training budget, so it will just all come from the same place. And and overall, that budget's gone down from thirty-eight, four thirty-four last year to thirty-two, three oh eight this year, and that's just because of the code officers. That we have now. Or in committees, again, you'll see this is just a you'll see how I combined some of those costs in the admin, so it's gonna be kind of hard to compare this year to last, this year to last year's budget. Other than that, there aren't any changes other than I think the wages for the secretary, the board secretary. And I think that's, oh, I don't think there's any other changes in this budget. One, one question I didn't, I don't have the answer to, is this planning services? I had originally thought that we were done paying K V cog for the comprehensive plan, but I just noticed that they're requesting having another meeting of that group, so and I'm not sure where that is, so I have to find out. I may have to put, I may have to put some of this money back in if we're gonna still be using it. If we're still gonna be contracting with cog into the next year, so.
Didn't we let them go?
Didn't we? I think he got done. Yeah, but I just noticed that they set up a comprehensive planning meeting and it's through his Zoom link. That's kind of how I found out about it because it was, it's through the the Cogs Zoom is what's set up, so they must be still.
So they didn't, they didn't communicate with you at all? No. I would call.
They had Lori set it up.
I would call them and talk to them about that because there's been a number of issues with them recently, people getting done frequently, no continuity. It's been very difficult for some of the people here in town who are working on some of these things to to get them done and to even know where we stand.
Okay.
And particularly for the comprehensive plan, it's it's actually probably gonna delay putting it out to vote for several years. It's been a mess.
K V cog is still running the, still running the Zoom, still supplying us with information when when we need it.
Okay.
So they're 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 not at the meeting.
Okay.
But they're still supplying information. There's some stuff that because we've gone through two or three different people at K V cog, they're going back to the first guy to get us information.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's still communications and Steve is still talking to them.
So we may still need some money in there.
You need to be in that loop.
Is that constructive? Is it working?
We need it. It's our, it's our information. We're we're trying to get it back from K V cog.
Okay.
As we find out that we don't have it, they have it. We don't have a list of what they had to begin with, so as we run through the comp plan, we're trying to find out all that information.
Our good status on that and figure out where we are.
And we should have all drafts of everything that's been discussed. I know most everything through the plan has been discussed, it's been updated. It hasn't necessarily been put together in the right order or or a number of other things, but we should have a repository of that here.
Looking to that. All we have for budgets tonight. To our number fifteen. Okay, I'll do my reading here. Bernstein Shore, it's Tiff and their normal retainer, one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents. Blue Rock Earthwork. Solid Waste Trips, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Brilliant Enterprises Corp, Corp, that's the new cruiser, eleven thousand two thirty-three, thanks to Paul's negotiating skills. Central Main Power, three thousand six hundred and nine dollars. Cockle Hagen Trailblazers, this is a state snowmobile refund, two thousand four hundred and three dollars. Dennis K. Burke, gas and diesel, six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. Year ago Wireless Inc. radios for the police, three thousand ninety-seven dollars. Eco-Mane Recycling, twenty-two hundred and seventy-two dollars. P S L Solutions, Inc., E R and Fire Package, Dan said.
Yeah, that's formerly E R S, which is Emergency Reporting Software.
Okay.
They've changed or company bought them out, so that's the new company.
Okay. One thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars, Fielding's Oil and Propane Heating Fuel, twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars. Forney's Tree Service, this is this is my understanding is this is this is tree work for the one of the cemeteries, and I guess we pay and then they reimburse us. I'm I'm not sure why. I I I.
Yes.
I've I've been told that's how it works.
You're a treasurer.
Okay. G D I Services, Inc., Jan, this is Janitorial Services, three thousand and fifty dollars. Kirk, our Barkman, this is his educational incentive, fifteen hundred dollars. La Rochelle Consulting, the Economic Development Person, twenty-six hundred dollars. Healthy Foreier and Son for the sidewalks on Beach Main, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Main Municipal Association, five thousand one hundred and nineteen, that's our annual dues. Main Waste to Energy, one thousand eight hundred and fourteen. Olivia Mora, her education incentive, fifteen hundred dollars. New England Salt Company, both salt, twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-one. Paul Designs Project, this is the architect for the academy project, four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Regional School Unit Number Two, four hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. T M D E Calibration Labs, Inc., Radar Unit for the Police Department, two thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Treasurer State of Maine, two thousand seven hundred and seven, two thousand one hundred and seventy-four, and that's for motor vehicles. Treasurer State of Maine Plumbing Permits, one thousand nine hundred and forty, and Treasurer State of Maine, I F and W, twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Need motion, will you approve warrant number fifteen?
So there's a motion by Chris, second by Cat, to approve warrant number fifteen. All those in favor?
Thank you. And next is an executive session pursuant to M R S A. Thirty-six M R S A, eight forty-one, two E, Poverty Abatement. I make a motion, we go to executive session?
Well, before we do that, I just wanted to point out that Justin, yeah, we do normally run all of the cemeteries expenses through the town.
Okay.
They reimburse us, but we also pay them. I think it's, it was eleven thousand dollars a year, maybe more now.
Right.
And it may be going, they may request an increase on the next budget. I have no idea, but that's kind of how that.
I'm currently the president of Cemetery Association and we were receiving. And.
Eleven last year.
We had asked here a few years ago, he. Like two thousand a year, but it never happened.
So it is ten.
To the best of my knowledge, Karen did put in a request to increase it. Payroll last year was a little bit lower due to the dry season.
Sure.
So we came in right around ten for payroll and whatever other.
He said clear floor was eleven, but who knows?
And I apologize, but if you could give me information on that, Bill, from Josh Bornier, I know I.
I don't have it here. Well, no, I do, actually, I got the whole.
Or did he reference which cemetery? Because we paid him direct, to the best of my knowledge. At least for cemetery, I oversee.
She doesn't include it. I don't have it here with me.
I'll check with our our treasurer.
Okay.
And I'll get back.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. Did you already vote?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Yes.
I interrupted this before somebody seconded it.
We get a motion.
Did you motion?
My motion.
I'll second.
Okay, this is a motion by Cat, second by Chris, to who would do executive session. All those in favor?
Thank you.
A move we grant the abatement. So there's a motion by Tim, second by Harold, to grant the abatement. All those in favor?
A move we adjourn.
You want these back?
You should collect all these and destroy them.
Yes, absolutely.
We haven't voted to adjourn yet, so. I'm needing a motion.
There was a motion and a second. And a third. The majority.
I'll raise my hand.
Well, you had to get some bodies in.
That answers my question. I'd like to know where places are, so it's.